Good evening. The special meeting of the Annapolis City Council on Monday, February the 8th, will be called to order at 7:03 PM. At this time, would everyone willing and able, please stand for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear God, help our words to be true. Help our actions be honest. Help our lives to reflect your holiness and shine your light for all to see. Help us to live with integrity. We thank you, God, for the opportunities to use the gifts that you have given us for your service today. Help us to do so in obedience, expecting nothing more than your well-done as reward. And dear God, please give us the strength to go against the flow of this world. Help us to resist what is wrong in your eyes and to act in ways that please you for the glory of your name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pan ladies?
Present.
President?
President.
Alderman Pan.
President.
Alderman Finlayson.
President.
Alderman Lippman.
Alderman Kirby.
Alderman Pfeiffer.
Alderman Arnett.
President.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our first item?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. The first item on the agenda is the approval of agenda.
Is there a motion to approve the Journal's proceeding of the regular meeting of January 11th, 2000?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Oh. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Your second?
No.
You'd like to add something?
Yes. On the last version of this agenda, we had the continuation of the APF for schools, and that was because it was going to timeout. It's not on here, so I would like to add that so we could address it and continue it.
I think that's postponed until the second meeting of February.
Pardon me?
I think it's postponed until the second meeting of February.
Oh, was it till the second meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, that's why. All right, thank you.
Never mind.
Would you like the second approval of the agenda? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is approval of the Journal of Proceedings for January.
Is there a motion to approve the Journal's proceeding for the regular meeting of January the 11th, 2016?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is a ceremonial item, beginning with ID-55-16, Mission Barbecue.
If Mr. Per Lamb, Representative Mission Barbecue, would please come forward.
Many of you know, the city of Annapolis had a fire that tore down the Annapolis Shack Club about a month ago. And we're looking at, see some of our first responders in the background that are going to get a citation later for their hard work during the snowstorm. Many people don't think, when you're out fighting a fire, or if you're a police officer out there, what do you do for dinner? And we were lucky enough to have Mission Barbecue came by and delivered food to our firemen and women that were out there fighting the fire. So we have a citation for you that I'm going to read, on behalf of myself and all the members of the city council. "On behalf of the citizens of the city of Annapolis, we are pleased to confer upon you this city council citation, in recognition of your outstanding community effort pertaining to the Annapolis Shack Club fire. Your selfless deeds and thoughtful gestures were appreciated by everyone who worked the fire and applauded by all of us who represent this great city. Given under our hand in the great seal of the city of Annapolis, on this eighth day of February 2016."
Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ID-57-16 Midshipman Action Group, ID-61-16, City of Annapolis Department of Public Works, ID-62-16, City of Annapolis Office of Emergency Management, ID-65-16, City of Annapolis Fire Department, ID-66-16, City of Annapolis Police Department Blizzard of January 2016.
As I think we've all heard, there's supposed to be more snow tonight, so we'll try to wrap this meeting up rather quickly. But I wanted to go back for a second and just talk about what took place during the last snowstorm and the good response that we had. A number of people are coming up that are going to be awarded citations for their hard work. I think it's important to note that all city departments were available and working around the clock. From our IT department, that was making sure the lights were running. Police and Fire, running operations. Want to give a special thanks to the National Guard. Our Human Resources, Wreckin' Parks, Transportation was running schedules for people who needed to get around. So it was really a group effort. So I'd like to invite all the people from the Fire Department, the Midshipman Action Group, the City of Annapolis Emergency Management, the Fire Department, the Police Department, First of all, let's give them a round of applause before we read the citations. The first one we're going to present is to the United States Naval Academy Midshipman Action Group, and I'll read it as follows. "On behalf of the citizens of the city of Annapolis, we are pleased to confer upon you this city council citation, in recognition of your dedication to the city of Annapolis, residents, and businesses. We applaud the United States Naval Academy Midshipmen and members of the Midshipman Action Group, MAG, for being ambassadors and for always making our residents and businesses your priority. We acknowledge that you're out shoveling sidewalks and clearing steps as soon as the snow started falling. The hours you spent helping our residents and businesses is reflected by your 26,000 hours of volunteer service every year." I think that deserves a round of applause. People don't often realize the work that they do tutoring kids and underprivileged communities, shoveling snow. We really appreciate the partnership and all that you do. We realize that your involvement is part of a set standard of your leadership. To that end, we would also like to extend our sincerest thanks to the Commandant of Midshipmen, Stephen Lozuski, Community Relations Director, Miriam Stanek, and all the Midshipmen who make Annapolis better. Given under our hand in the great seal of the city of Annapolis, on this eighth day
Good evening, Midshipman Michael Higgins. I'm the Vice President for the Midshipman Action Group. And our service, you know, coming out there and shoveling the snow in Annapolis right after the storm hit, really stems from our first day at the Naval Academy. As Midshipmen, we take an oath to serve our country, whether that be here in Annapolis or across the world, across the globe. And that service really starts here. It starts here in the community, helping those around us, helping our neighbors. And being out there shoveling the snow is a tangible way for us to get out there, have some fun, and to give back to the great community of Annapolis that has supported us all these years and will continue to support Midshipmen in the future. So, thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, thank you on behalf of the Brigade of Midshipmen and the academy itself. This is indicative, I think, of the relationship, the long and close relationship between the academy and the city of Annapolis. And we couldn't ask for better neighbors. We will look forward to more in the future, and we'll see what tonight brings us.
Thank you, thank you. Future citation? You'll read the next one?
This is a city council citation for the Department of Public Works. "On behalf of the citizens of the city of Annapolis, we are pleased to confer upon you this city council citation, in recognition of your selfless dedication to the citizens of Annapolis. We applaud you for your exceptional service during the January Blizzard of 2016. We applaud the fact that you worked six days straight pulling 12-hour shifts in an effort to clear all 90 miles of roadway in Annapolis, making Annapolis residents and businesses your top priority. We honor you today and thank you for your immense contribution to our great city. Given under our hands in the great seal of the city of Annapolis, this eighth day of February 2016, signed by the mayor and all of the councilmen." And I would also like to add my personal note that Director Darrell received many inquiries, let's call it that, from myself and my colleagues, from constituents coming to us. And I just thank him personally for handling all of them in a professional and respectful manner. I know he doesn't do it alone, he does it with his staff. So, thank you, Director.
12 hours is a very long time to be in a public works truck. Believe me, I did it for a few hours, and it was, shakes all the bones in your body. The next one is for the City of Annapolis Office of Emergency Management. "On behalf of the citizens of the city of Annapolis, we are pleased to confer upon you this city council citation, in recognition of your dedication to the residents and businesses of Annapolis. We applaud the men and women in the Office of Emergency Management for directing the actions of hundreds of individuals during the January Blizzard of 2016. I just want to say, when you go in the war room downstairs and all the departments are sitting around the table, it takes a lot of coordination to pull that off. During the days leading up to, during, and after the storm, the Office of Emergency Management played a key role in disseminating critical city information to residents regarding the status of both storm and storm recovery to keep the city informed and calm during a very chaotic time. You created a seamless process, directed your staff, and executed by hundreds of city workers, all keeping, all keeping by staying focused and working together to achieve resiliency. This citation is given under our hand in the great seal of the city of Annapolis, on
City of Annapolis Citation for the Annapolis Fire Department. Chief Stokes, "On behalf of the citizens of the city of Annapolis, we are pleased to confer upon you this city council citation, in recognition of your dedication to the residents and businesses of Annapolis. We applaud the men and women of the Annapolis Fire Department for putting yourselves in harm's way in an effort to respond to the demands of our residents during the January Blizzard of 2016. Your group of highly skilled and professional individuals worked in dangerous conditions for extended hours with no expectation of gratitude because it was their job. Your humble commitment is honored tonight. Given under our hands in the great seal of the city of Annapolis, this eighth day of February 2016, signed by the mayor and all of the councilmen."
Last but certainly not least, is our Annapolis Police Department. "The city of Annapolis, we are pleased to confer upon you this city council citation, in recognition of your dedication to the residents and business of the city of Annapolis. We applaud the men and women of the Annapolis Police Department for putting yourselves in harm's way in an effort to respond to the demands of our residents during the January Blizzard of 2016. Your group of highly skilled and professional individuals worked in dangerous conditions for extended hours with no expectation of gratitude because it was your job. Your humble commitment is honored here tonight. Given under our hand in the great seal of the city of Annapolis, on this eighth day of February 2016, signed by myself and all the members of the council."
Mr. City Attorney, would you please?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor, we just had a great representation of those departments this evening. I would like to suggest that we make copies of the citation for each member of each department, so that all of our staff members will actually have a copy in hand, and that the ones that the directors received, they be framed and posted someplace within their department. And my second request is that the departments that you mentioned earlier, Transportation, Wreckin' Parks, MIT, that they be brought in at the next meeting and given recognition as well. Thank you.
We will certainly make sure everyone who is involved has the citation. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ID-56-16, the Martha Wood Leadership Award to the Annapolis Lions Club.
If I could have the representatives of the Lions Club join me at the center table?
This city council citation is for the Annapolis Lions Club. "On behalf of the citizens of the city of Annapolis, we are pleased to extend to you this city council citation, in recognition of being the 16th recipient of the prestigious Martha Wood Leadership Award, showcasing many years of dedicated service to our area. The Lions Club was chartered on June 3rd, 1941 in Annapolis, with 28 businesses. And professional citizens of the City of Annapolis Lions Club began as charter members. We acknowledge that your organization specializes in worthy community service projects, especially eye exam and glasses, at no cost to low-income individuals throughout our community, and donated by local optic companies. The residents of the Housing Authority of the City of Annapolis have benefited from this service for many years, most with no other means of assistance for optical care. For your consistent and successful efforts in serving the youth of the Housing Authority of the City of Annapolis, we applaud your determination and honor you here tonight for what you have done for our community. Given under our hand in the great seal of Annapolis, on this eighth day of February 2016.
The president didn't want to have anything to say. He just said, "It's me, because I'm always talking." It's an honor for us to help the city of Annapolis and the people that cannot afford glasses. Up until about six years ago, the Annapolis Lions Club stood to cost of all of these glasses. Now, through the great efforts of lens crafters of Annapolis, we get them for free. They give us an examination, and they give us glasses. And they tell me I can only do so many, and I usually sneak in more than that.
Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is petitions, reports, and communications, beginning with the Housing Authority of the City of Annapolis HACA Quarterly Report.
If I could have the members of the Housing Authority, please join me at the center Good evening. If everyone could introduce themselves, then the floor is all yours. If you could hit the button in the middle for the microphone.
Okay. Yeah. To my right is Richard Walton. Next to him is the Vice Chairperson, Debbie Johnson. And on the end is our Treasurer, Jackie Wells. To my left is our newly hired Executive Director, Melvin Colbert. And next to him is also our newly employed Security and Public Safety Person, Derek Matthews.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Richard Walton, and I would be presenting the Quarterly Report on behalf of the Housing Authority of the City of Annapolis. I first start with the finance. And if you turn to the other page of the agenda, you'll see I have the income and expense That's telling you we are trying to reduce our expenses considerably. That's why we are using paper now, back and front. Our goal is to reduce our printing costs by 25% in 2016. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I am pleased to report that for the first six months in this fiscal year, the agency realized a surplus of $112,597. I just want to repeat that for what it's worth. $112,597 compared to a year ago, where our contribution was just $3,900. The reason primarily for that is our income, and that's the income received from our residents of $114,000. More of our residents earned more. More of our residents might have been working. I remember two years ago, when sequestration hit, that number was reversed. We were receiving $150,000 less from our residents. Notations, the present occupancy rate is 96%. Our goal is to achieve 98%, and we are well on our way to achieving that. At the end of February, we're going to have an occupancy rate of 97%. Our Bloomsbury Square Building is 100% occupied. Our Blum Building is 100% occupied. And our Robinwood Community will be 100% by the end of this month. So that's good news. Subsidies received from HUD in 2016 is 85%. That's the same rate we received in fiscal year 2015. Expenses are slightly higher, $5,000. And as I mentioned earlier, our revenue is higher by $114,000, and I did explain the reason for that. The deficit at Blum is $6,800. And we are hoping to close that gap by the end of our fiscal year, which is June 30th, 2016. And the reason for that is we were able to combine some positions at the Blum Building, and it has helped us to reduce our costs considerably there. The surplus reported will be going towards helping us increase our reserve account. That concludes the accounting and finance report. I'll take questions after I mention quickly two other issues here. The public safety, we have hired Mr. Derek Matthews to be our Security Officer and a Public Safety Person. Mr. Matthews brings to the table a resume that any organization would be proud to have him as staff. At this point, I want to introduce him to you and let him say a few words or tell you a little bit about himself. Mr. Matthews.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. I'll be brief, as the incoming Executive Director and I have yet to actually sit down and talk, first day on the job today. I'm a former Prince George's County Sheriff Deputy, law enforcement career person. I spent a number of years on the federal task force, working safe streets back in the day with the FBI, working violent crimes in major narcotics. Left there after a number of years and went on to the federal government, where I was the Deputy Director of the Federal Protective Service, where I had somewhere in excess of about 17,000 to 21,000 officers across the country, to include Alaska and Guam. I'm a born and raised Anapolitan. My grandmother lived in Harbor House my entire growing up career or life. I had family that lived in Annapolis Gardens, and these communities are my home. These communities are where I would like to put my heart in, to see to it that the residents that live there feel that they have every right to be safe and secure as anybody else that lives in the city of Annapolis. And we're going to execute some things today. Just real brief, we worked on, just established and opened up some relationships where we can make sure that our infrastructure can support the vision that the Executive Director and I will move forward on. One of the key things today I spent time working on right off the bat was looking at our banning policy. We're working closely with the Annapolis City Police Department for us to get that executed properly. So our relationships with Fire EMS and the Police Department, I expect will get us to where we need to be over a short period of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I want to touch briefly on where we are with the redevelopment. Aubrey Court College Street, Phase 3 is on schedule. There should be leasing those units, I would think, by the end of March. Newtown 20, Woodside Gardens, still on hold. Morris Church Blum, redevelopment, the same situation. Eastport Harbor House Terrace, Phase 2 of the weatherization project should be completed by the end of February. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that concludes my report. We are now open for questions.
Alderman Arnett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of different things. One, can we meet the new Executive Director?
Oh, I do apologize for that. I would like to give the new Executive Director the opportunity to introduce himself to the mayor and the city councils. Mr.?
Thank you, Richard. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for having us here this evening. My vision for the Housing Authority is one that is very near and dear to my heart. I come through the Housing Authority from years of experience. I worked for the Housing Authority- I worked for the Housing Authority starting back in the 80s, and I worked for 14 years, starting at the Resident Services level, working my way up to become Director of Resident Services. And as a result of that, I've seen the Housing Authority through a number of transitions. Our goal is one simple goal for the Authority, is to bring it back to its once promise. Residents of the city of Annapolis, low and moderate income housing, deserve the best for what we have to offer. And that's what our administration is going to do for the city and for the residents who live in public housing. So I start on Tuesday, I start with my Safety Officer and my Board, and we will bring about the much-needed changes to the Housing Authority that's needed. Thank you so much, and I look forward to working with the City Council and the municipal council.
Orderwoman Pindell Charles?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say that I am quite impressed, quite impressed, by Mr. Matthews as well as Mr. Colbert. As we've said in another session, I have not really known Mr. Matthews, but I knew his mom and remember her well. As a former prosecutor retired in Baltimore City, I can certainly appreciate his impeccable credentials, and we look forward to working with you and doing the things that need to be done with the Housing Authority. As far as Mr. Colbert is concerned, he failed to tell us that he too is a native Annapolitan. Graduated from Annapolis High School, we were there together, went on to Morgan together.
Absolutely.
And I've known Mr. Colbert for a long time. And likewise, impeccable credentials, and we're looking for great things from the Housing Authority. I'm very pleased that we have two persons who are incredibly talented and know the city very well. And I thank the Board, and I thank the folks over at the Housing Authority for choosing these two people, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Orderwoman Philason?
Yes, thank you. I too would like to congratulate Mr. Colbert and Mr. Matthews. It is time for a change, and I look forward to working with Ms. Chapman. We had a little chat before this meeting. Public safety is an important issue to everyone. And now that we have an executive, a new Chairman of the Board, and Mr. Matthews on board, we know that we're moving in the right direction. Your gain is our loss as far as Mr. Matthews is concerned, because we needed him too, but you got him first, and that's all good. So I very much look forward to working with you and your Board and our constituents. Thank you and congratulations.
Alderman Pan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to welcome both of these individuals on board. Mr. Colbert used to tag along with my brother and I when we delivered the Capitol on Charles Street and Cathedral and Conduit back in a former lifetime. He and his brother used to keep us out of trouble in the neighborhood. He's much older than we were, of course, but no, he was a little kid when we were big kids, believe it or not. But with regard to our new Security Chief, what do you think we can do to work a little better with the City Police Department? I mean, we've had a series of violent crimes that unfortunately has taken place in the public housing community. In many cases, retaliation for this, retaliation for that, coming on other people's turfs. I mean, I keep hearing about lack of police patrols, too many police patrols. I mean, what can we do? We need help in the, you know, in the public housing community.
We do.
And it's, more often than not, it's not the folks that live there that are the troublemakers. We know that. But they're not doing a good job of keeping the troublemakers the hell out of there.
I'll be brief again. I look forward to Tuesday with us getting an opportunity. But right off the bat, to answer your question, again, several hours were spent today looking at the banning policy as it currently resides. I spent Thursday with several hours with the Chief of Police and some of his staff. It's going to take some relationship building, it's going to take some trust building, and it's going to take some teamwork between everybody that's involved with the Housing Authority, as well as the community, as well as with the police. It's going to take some trust building within the community that we have follow-up when things happen. But it's going to take a team effort, and it's going to take a plan that we'll execute. And it can be done. It's been done in other cities. We did it in Prince George's County in Glen Arden when I sat as the Assistant Chief of Police. Glen Arden was a lot worse off than a lot of places in Annapolis right now. We were able to do that in a short amount of time.
Well, I'm a career prosecutor, just retired after 36 years in the office, chief of violent crime, and I've worked those cases from there, and I think you're going to need to do what I've just done, roll the old sleeves up.
Correct.
Get to work. Good luck.
Correct. Appreciate it.
And I'll walk you forward.
Thank you.
Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Pan touched on many of the topics I was going to bring up, but I'm not so sure I'm willing to give up on this liaison function just because you're working at the Housing Authority now. I think we may...
Not to worry.
Yeah, right. The other thing that we haven't talked about, and there has been some meetings and some movement forward, and I know that Maria Broadbent had meetings with staff at the Housing Authority about the inspections. And at our meeting here with HUD, we talked about the fact that we really need to have the Council come over to your shop and sit down with you guys as soon as possible to talk this through, talk about how it's going to work, talk about expectations, talking about all the incredible logistics when we get into making repairs and things like that. So I think we're all very receptive to an invite to come over to your offices and sit down and start talking this through.
Yes, we would appreciate that. Anytime that's convenient, just call us and we'll make that happen.
Any other questions? Alderman Littman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions. First of all, welcome to the new additions. Certainly impressed by the credentials that were mentioned. I have a few questions. Come back to the safety questions in a second. First, if you don't mind, if you wouldn't mind sharing what your plans are for the surplus? What are you going to do with this money?
Well, we obviously have to build a reserve because we don't have a very large one, and just in case there's a disaster and something serious should happen. In addition to that, HUD expects us to have at least four months of operating expenses in the bank. In other words, our average monthly expense is about, what, $500,000? They expect us to have $2 million in the bank, and we are nowhere near that. And as a matter of fact, it's difficult for any Housing Authority to have that kind of money sitting in the bank. So just in case for one reason or the other they're unable to fund us for two or three months, we will have enough money to operate, pay salaries, keep electricity on, keep the phones going. So that's the reason why we are trying our best to manage our expenses the best we can. We have asked all employees to contribute more. A year ago, when we were in extreme difficulty, when we had difficult times, you know, we were forced to make some staff adjustments and combine positions and so on. So that's helping us out now. So that's the direction we're heading in, which is a very good one, I must say.
With the increase in the spread between revenues and expenses, do you expect to have more monies that you'll be able to spend on the repairs and improvements of the residences?
Absolutely. Already I have an all-hands-on-deck approach to go into our communities and do preventative maintenance. I think that was lacking over the years. And our goal, as the chair lady said, you know, we're no longer doing business the same way. You know, we're doing business at the Housing Authority very different from the way it was done in the past. And I have an all-hands-on-deck approach, and it's only because of the blizzard of two weeks ago that the guys were able to, they had to leave that operation, but they have started back today. We are going into all of our units to make sure all the preventative maintenance are done. So pretty much we are prepared for the inspection when it comes, you know, and we look forward to working with the city because we all want to know that our residents are comfortable where they live.
I'm having a little difficulty reconciling your comments that you were trying to reduce expenses, obviously would have saved money by not having an Executive Director for a short amount of time and reducing the cost, but yet your expenses went up, not by a lot, but they didn't go down. I'm having a hard time understanding.
Well, the reason why the expenses went up, we incur obviously some severance pay and one or two other expenses, you know, that increase our expense. That's the reason for the increase, slight increase in expenses.
Okay, the severance pay surprised me because I thought the people who left, they left on their own intent as opposed to being asked to leave.
Well, I don't want to get into personal matters in this forum, I can't do that.
Okay.
So...
Fair enough, but just your comment about severance pay surprised me. I didn't expect to hear that. Mr. Matthews, is Mr. the right title? I don't want to be insulting. Okay. You obviously have a distinguished career and... You obviously have a distinguished career, and the last thing I want to do is be insulting by not acknowledging the proper title. Obviously, it sounds like you have a lot of work ahead of you and that you fully recognize that, and I'm very pleased to hear that you're anxious to dive right into that. What message would you like our residents to hear about their expectations, addressing their frustrations, their concerns from hearing sirens, gunshots? What do you think, what message should you be sending so that the expectations can be fair, both to expect a lot of you but also give you a chance to make a difference?
The first message has to be fair and honest, and that it's going to take some time, and they need to know that something is being done. While I would like to say a lot tonight, I'm a very methodical planner. I don't like to just jump into things without an execution plan. Things usually fail when you do that. And having said that, I need just a little bit of time to do a full assessment on what it is I'm hearing. Everybody here has a little bit more knowledge on paper of what is really going on. As I spent time today reading the five-year plan, I know what the plan is down the road, but I really don't know yet with one day on the job what the infrastructure is in place to support what it is him and I will execute as a vision. So having said that, as I tried to send some emails out to the team today, just to let them know that we're going to be transparent, and we need to know that things are being done, relationships are being built, but the infrastructure has to support what it is we execute on a plan. So hearing the gunshots and calls for service, several phone calls today just to the Police Department to follow up on some calls for some things that happened this weekend, and giving that feedback right back to my property managers made all the difference in the world. There's been some disconnect, there's a delta between things happening and follow-up due to, I guess, the loss of positions being opened for a little while. So what the community needs to know, and we'll get an opportunity to address each community face-to-face as time goes on, to let them know what these plans are. But I want to be very careful in what I say that we're going to do until I get an opportunity to really lay out what the plans are based off of what we know. I'm a data-driven, metrics-driven person, so we'll have meetings like this where I'll be able to come in and tell you, very data-driven, what it is that happened, what it is that we did to rectify it, and what we do to plan to mitigate it in the future. I hope that answers your question.
It does. I suspect there'll be a lot of citizens that will be happy to hear you're on board with your credentials and that will want to share their story with you. Is there contact information that you're willing to share, either email or phone number that people can use to send a message to?
Right, I think that's a great question. Right now, I think the best avenue, because it's working and it's in place, is the resident managers at each property. Three incredible ladies right now need to continue to be the face and voice of what's happening in the community, and my plan is to interact with them daily. My email to them today was, I'm going to hit each property before the week is out and sit down in their environments and walk the properties with them in tow so folks can see who that guy is and what his role is and what the expectations are for them.
What about for the residents that don't live in those communities? How should they express to you their concerns?
The residents that do not live in the community?
Right.
Be more specific. Just the citizens of Annapolis?
Yes, citizens of Annapolis. So on the Facebook, the Eastport Forum, for instance, you have a lot of residents that don't live in HACCA properties, live near it, hear the sirens because of the activity on it, have concerns, have a lot of thoughts that they'd like to share.
I think the message needs to be consistent. They need to know too that you all have chosen what I believe is the right person for the job, and just to give me an opportunity to know that behind the scenes of what they hear, there are things going on to mitigate them hearing that less.
I understand that. My question is, how could they send a message to the Housing Authority?
To us?
Yes.
What's our main number? Can someone, I don't even know our main number right now, and then...
Can you speak into the mic, please? And is there a general email address that people can use if they want to say, "Welcome, Chief, here's what I'm concerned about"?
Well, we can get, we will get the Executive Director's contact information to you because everything should go through our Executive Director, and then he will take it from there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great question. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Any other questions? Comments?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sure you can anticipate what my question is. I would like to know if you have an idea when the other Commissioners will be appointed to this Board, because we really need a full Board.
I understand that concern, and on tonight's agenda, we have another of appointments and reappointments coming up. The HACCA appointments are my number-one priority, and I would like to have them at least gone through my office by the end of the month at the latest. Then it has to go for Council approval after that. You're welcome. Thank you for coming tonight. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is reports by committees.
Is there any other person that would like to present a report? Alderman Pan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Economic Matters Committee will meet at 6:30 on Wednesday, February 10, right here in the John Chambers City Council Chambers. We will be discussing pending legislation and other matters of interest. The public is, of course, invited to attend and to contribute in any way that they feel is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Alderman Budge?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Members of the Council, the Transportation Committee met last month and endorsed the appointments of the candidates you will be reviewing tonight. Our next meeting is on the 16th, that's a Tuesday, at 6:30 in these chambers.
Thank you. Alderman Arnett?
Rules and City Government will be meeting tomorrow and will be taking up several pieces of legislation, including the legislation clarifying removal of members of boards and commissions, and three other pieces of legislation that are not nearly as controversial. And that meeting will be here in Council Chambers at 5 o'clock.
Thank you. Orderwoman Philason?
Yes, the Public Safety Committee will meet on Wednesday of this week, 5 o'clock here in Council Chambers. We'll be taking up the recommendations that came from the Caucus of African-American Leaders on Policing in the City. And we will have a somewhat of a document so that we'll be able to track progress of those recommendations.
Thank you. Alderman Littman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Environmental Matters Committee did not hold its usual meeting in January. The agenda that we had set will be pushed to the February meeting, which itself will be pushed back a week. Instead of the 3rd, it'll be the 4th Thursday of February. We have an active, just for the record, that date is February 25. We have a full agenda, and I welcome participation by anyone interested in it. The first thing we're going to do is do something we did in the beginning of 2015, which is lay out what we'd like to cover for the year by sort of allotting months that we were going to tackle different topics. It addressed the concern by some interested parties that we weren't addressing fast enough certain issues. So by giving people advance notice, that was helpful.
So by giving people advance notice, that was helpful. We plan to do that again for 2016. We'll also hear from DNEP and Public Works on their department, departmental initiatives as they relate to environmental issues, and also an update from DNEP and Public Works on stormwater fund use, which is a topic that we haven't covered in a little while. And lastly, we'll conclude with Forest Conservation Act updates. Separate from the Environmental Matters Committee, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce everybody to Mark Rodriguez, if you wouldn't mind standing for a minute. Mark is going to be my new legislative intern, and so you might see him at various committee meetings, various events, and he'll be working with me and helping, helping me assist, assist me on issues generally, but also specifically to the Latino and Hispanic community. So, welcome, Mark. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is comments by the general public.
During comments by the general public, you may speak on anything that's not already scheduled for a public hearing. So if you came to speak about the boat shows, removing members from boards and commissions, water service billing adjustments, or the maritime museum lease, those public hearings are coming up directly after this. We have one speaker signed up, and it is Robert Eads. Bless you.
We do an excellent job for the city. Mr. Mayor, I read in the newspaper today about your possible proposal with Uber. I thought y'all was working for the car drivers. I just wanted to put that out there, because it just seems like you going with Uber. Twenty-five cents, I wish you would do that for us per trip. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Um, you gotta watch, man, I don't usually be on paper, but... I am here to talk about inappropriate behavior. It is inappropriate behavior for young black men to stand on corners and sell drugs. It is inappropriate behavior for fathers not to be there for their children. With that being said, I think it is inappropriate behavior for me to come, come in front of this city council on numerous occasions to inform you of what's happening and going on in the black hood. I say hood because there's no community, because the community consists of business, stores, doctors' offices, everything I grew up, what was in the 4th world, which is gone. Then that left the neighborhood hood. Well, the neighbors moved out and all that's left is the hood. So when you hear me say hood, that's what I'm saying when I use the word hood, because we don't have a community anymore. It is inappropriate behavior for this city council to, to break the, um, excuse me, it is inappropriate behavior to, for this council to sit back, set up and... to set up and watch the destruction of the black community while allowing the Hispanic community develop its, to develop. It's inappropriate behavior for the city to ignore the fact that Trudy McFaul used her position as chairperson at the Annapolis Housing Board of Commissioners with the aid of Teresa, Teresa Wellman, who I believe is giving Trudy McFaul all the inside information to, information, so that Trudy McFaul could gain opportunities for her companies to prosper while raping the black hood. It is inappropriate behavior for the city council to sit back and watch the black hood be robbed and, and of their properties. It is inappropriate behavior for the city council to ignore my request of who approved the O'Berry Court College Creek Terrace to be developed with inadequate recreation and parking. Of course, you know, they build 167 units, family units, with no recreation for the children. And of course, we know about the parking issue. Let me see. Wait a minute, I stop that. It is inappropriate behavior for the black, blacks who sit on the city council not to represent black as a, as a whole. It is inappropriate behavior for this city council not to, not to ask for bilingual classes starting at pre-K, so black children would not be, would be put in a position of, would not be put in a position of disadvantage, excuse me. Okay, the Hispanic community is growing all around us, it's changing. It seems like the black communities are being dissolved while black, while the Hispanic communities are growing and developing. And if it's going to happen like that, our children should be from pre-K toward to speak Spanish, so that we can have a fair opportunity. It is inappropriate behavior for this city council not to provide adequate funding to the city police department, so that they can, they can have daily, daily foot patrol in our needed, in our most needed areas.
Mr. Eads, if I could ask you to summarize the five minutes ago, and I'm sure the colleagues have questions for you.
I just did. I'm sorry. That was what I had to say. I know I ticked off some people, stepped on some toes. Come on with it.
Well, I'd just talk about Uber to begin with. One of the things that happens, I believe the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, the city of Annapolis was the first one to actually take on Uber in the state of Maryland out of 157 cities. The legislation that passed by the state regulates and dictates the way Uber is regulated throughout the state of Maryland. One of the things we've tried to do over the years to even out the playing field since the state made Uber legal is to impose a fee on it. Same fee that you have, not the exact same fee, but a fee that you have to pay. We also lowered, I believe, my colleagues on the council supported it, some of the taxi fees for that. But by no means, to make it very clear, the city did not approve Uber in any fashion. The state approved it for all 157 cities and towns, and the only jurisdiction we have is to impose a fine on them, not a fine, a fee for each trip they take. Is that correct?
Twenty-five cents.
That is correct.
That's a joke.
That's the maximum the state allows.
That's a joke when you got us, anyway, I heard that, but I'm gonna stick to my guns. Public Service Commission does not regulate the taxi cab industry in the city of Annapolis. And you guys need to get the, and stand up and fight the state. If, if it's going to happen, you gotta buck the state. Don't be scared. You just said you was the first one in 153. If y'all start, I guarantee your other cities will fall. But I just, you know, I talked to the attorney, he explained it all to me, which was all jiggle, 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 because I'm stuck on the Public Service Commission does not regulate the taxi cab industry in the city of Annapolis.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you for coming. Alderwoman Pendel Charles?
Mr. Mr. Eads, I have a question.
Come on.
We just sat through a presentation by HACCA. We have heard the credentials of Mr. Matthews as well as Mr. Colbert. Do you think that we are headed in the right direction, since we do know that a great majority of the residents within the HACCA community are African-American?
Yeah, and I would say not because of it being that most of HACCA is African-American, but I just happen to know those two gentlemen personally, and it's going to be no nonsense from both of them. I understand that, and I think that that would, what, what I think those two gentlemen would bring to the table would work in any public college development. So I guess the answer to your question is yes.
Okay. So we are moving in, in, in the right direction when it comes to that area?
Yes, I think so.
Well, thank you for the credit. Appreciate it.
Come on, I was looking for an argument tonight.
Alderman Budge?
Uh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Eads, for coming to speak with us tonight. The, as you know, we're about to, I presume, speaking for my fellow council members, reappoint you to the Transportation Board. And I would appreciate it if you would push the Transportation Board to recommend to the council changes that might be appropriate in taxi regulation to make the taxi industry more competitive here.
I've, I will do that, but I've also been looking at some things that I think that we can do to make us more compatible with Uber.
Sure.
Now I'm looking for that twenty-five cent per fare for my fees. If I register each year, I'm not wanting to joke you, Mr. Mayor, don't get, don't get, don't take it as a joke. Uh, come on, somebody. Okay, let me say something, then I'm gonna...
We're gonna, we're gonna have to move on, because that's been the five minutes, and you've actually had more, you've had about 10 to 15 minutes.
No, it wasn't me had 10 minutes, it was questions to be answered, but I'll sit down. But I was really expecting to hear a little more arguments.
Maybe the next meeting. If there's anyone else from the council that would like to speak, now is your opportunity. And the public that would like to speak, now is your opportunity. Seeing no motions, I declare petitions, reports, and communications closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is the reappointment of the Acting Director of Human Resources pursuant to Charter, Article 6, Section 2B.
Is there a motion to approve the reappointment of Tricia Hopkins as Acting Director of Human Resources pursuant to the Charter, Article 6, Section 2?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is reappointments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe that unless there's an exception, we reappoint everybody en masse, or whatever the appropriate terminology is.
Second that.
Is there anyone who's here that's being reappointed tonight? Robert, thank you, Robert, give Robert a round of applause. All in favor of the appointments by group, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on our agenda? Oh, is there a motion to approve all of the appointments?
Some move.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is business and miscellaneous, beginning with GT-09-16, transfer from roof repair program, transfer to indoor firing range, APD.
Is there a motion to approve GT-09-16? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Oh, Alderman Littman? Alderman Finlayson?
Um, yes, could you, and I'm looking, trying to open it. I thought that when we got the bond money, whether it was bond money last year or not, is this for a shortfall? I thought we had secured $250,000 for the range?
That is correct.
So I'm looking at what this was...
I'll let Alderman Pfeiffer take it up, they went through it in five minutes.
Yeah, I think that's exactly it. I think when the, the cost of actually doing the project, there was a shortfall from the bond fund. So we, we did receive the state money, I think, $43,000, you know, extra to finish the project and move forward.
Sure.
Thank you.
The, the $43,000 is, the, the explanation says that it covers $10,000 for ventilation, $10,000 for electrical, and 10% contingency. So we, to assume that roughly $23,000 is 10% of the entire project?
The entire, the, it was a matching grant, the bond proceeds. So the total project was $500,000. Later on, the, the amount of money from the state was reduced by $50,000. So this transfer essentially recoups that $50,000 that was needed in addition to the original specs.
So do you expect to spend the 10, extra 10%, the $23,000?
As part of the contingency? No.
Okay.
It's all part. We, we expect to spend the $500,000 en masse, in the aggregate amount.
The, the money that we're transferring, though, the 23%...
David Gerald, Director of Public Works. So, so we, of course, hope to not spend the contingency, but, you know, things happen during construction, so we just wanted to have that available in case something does come up. But, but our hope is always to not have to spend the contingency.
And it's not spent, it's available for another project.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is GT-10-16, transfer from community grants, unallocated transfer to We Care Winter Relief.
Is there a motion to approve GT-10-16?
Some move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is GT-11-16, transfer from CDBG Program Incom, transfer to Lighthouse, Permanent Supportive Housing, Stanton Center Rehabilitation, Funding for Public Services and Administration.
Is there a motion to approve GT-11-16?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just very briefly, I just want to make sure everyone realizes that this is a really big win. This was more money than the city expected to receive from HUD, and so the Housing Committee is distributing it in the same allocations roughly with some more administrative costs, but I just wanted to highlight that this is a nice win from HUD.
Anyone else? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is GT-12-16, transfer from parking meter replacement transfer to city dock infrastructure.
Is there a motion to approve GT-12-16?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Littman?
Mr. Mayor, first, I'd like to just make sure I'm reading this correctly, because I think the title is in the reverse order as the description of what's being transferred, where money's coming and going. I think it's the title that's wrong, not the description.
Well, just the, the money's coming from the city dock infrastructure program and is going into the parking meter replacement, is to replace parking heads down there.
Right. So the title's reversed.
Yeah. Alderman Littman, you're correct.
Okay.
We'll replace that title.
Thanks.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is public hearings, beginning with Ordinance O-01-16, Amendment Number 1 to the Annapolis Maritime Museum, Inc., lease agreement.
Nobody was signed up in advance. If you'd like to address the council, now is your opportunity.
Mr. Mayor, I'm Buckview Cannon.
Could you speak into the microphone, please, sir?
Sure.
People at home can't hear you. Thank you.
I'm Buckview Cannon. I was the, I was the chairman of the museum for about eight years during its total reconstruction. I'm pleased to be back. I have many friends on the campus. I'm pleased to be back. I have many friends on the campus. Good to see you. We are here, I'm here with Alice Astrada, our executive director, simply to answer any questions or receive any comments that the council may have. I'm not gonna give a speech.
All right. Any questions for the council? Great.
May there be little snow. Thank you.
Anyone else like to testify? Seeing no motion, I declare the public hearing on 0-01-16 closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing on Ordinance O-02-16, amending the composition of the Maritime Advisory Board.
Karen Jennings, the only person signed up to speak this evening.
My name's Karen Jennings. I'm currently serving as chair of the Annapolis Maritime Museum. And on behalf of our board, I need to, um, to express our support for the change. Um, I myself, um, well, I do probably remember being the rest of the women that is. Right now, the chair of the Annapolis Maritime Museum, where I currently have this position on the, I do. I'm a fellow, I've always tended to be in the front. As far as I'm aware, I'm a faculty member. I did a lot of, um, research and knew a lot of our board was very busy with the company. And, um, we were fully in, uh, the change for the, I do work, I don't know where that. We were thinking about our board and, um, I had made the adjustment to the fact that we were changing. I don't know if that's what you have. We discussed it on our board and sent all the work that we need to be public. Even though the American lobby voted against the Annapolis Maritime Museum. We feel we could have done that.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Now is your opportunity. Seeing no motion in the chambers, I declare the public hearing on 03... 02-16 closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing on Ordinance O-3-16, Stevens Incorporated Lease of 142 Dock Street.
Nobody had signed up. If you'd like to come forward and address the council, now is your opportunity. Seeing no motion in the chambers, Alderman Lippman?
Mr. Mayor, before we close, um, the public hearing on this, as you know, I'm, I'm concerned about this council's consideration of this legislation while we still don't have any sort of plat or map indicating what property we're actually talking about. And so it concerns me that we would close the public hearing before getting to that point. Um, I realize that we can't get to, uh, committee review and get more information by that vehicle until the public hearing closes. So I would look for some advice on how we might be able to move over to committee consideration, but, uh, leave open the possibility of coming back to a public hearing or perhaps just leave the public hearing open until we, until we get a plat or map of what property we're talking about.
I, I think the cleanest way to proceed is we're still waiting on the title report, as, as you know. And so I would recommend that once we have that report, that report go to the committees. And if the committees find some, uh, variance in their expectations or something that they believe rises to the level of requiring additional comment, they would come back to the whole, uh, body and ask that it be reopened.
I can go along with that. I'd feel better if, uh, if I had the opportunity for the committee that I represent or that I chair to have that consideration. So I will make a motion that this legislation be assigned to the Environmental Matters Committee. Thank you.
I will have the legislation refer to the Environmental Matters Committee. It doesn't require a vote. Anyone else like to speak? Seeing no motion, I declare the public hearing on 03-16 closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing on Ordinance O-04-16, lease of city property, Spring 2017 Boat Shows.
Nobody was signed up to speak in advance. If you'd like to come forward and address this council, now is your opportunity. Seeing no motion, I declare the public hearing on 04-16 closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing on Ordinance O-5-16, lease of city property, Spring 2018 Boat Shows.
Nobody was signed up again to speak. Doesn't look like anyone's coming forward to talk about it. So I declare the public hearing on 05-16 closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing on Ordinance O-6-16, lease of city property, Spring 2019 Boat Shows.
If anyone would like to speak on this ordinance, please come forward. Seeing no motion, I declare the public hearing on 06-16 closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing on Ordinance O-09-16, removing members of boards and commissions.
Nobody was signed up in advance to speak? If you'd like to come forward to address the council, now is your opportunity. Seeing no motion, I declare the public hearing on 09-16 closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing on Ordinance O-10-16, water service billing adjustments.
Nobody was signed up again. If you'd like to address the council, now is your chance. Seeing no motion, I declare the public hearing on 010-16 closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is legislative action beginning with Ordinance O-32-14, Forest Conservation Requirements and Standards in the City of Annapolis.
We've discussed this at meetings before, so the public knows. If you have something that's not up for a vote, you have to postpone it to a meeting in the future at a date certain. So with that being said, is there a motion to postpone O-32-14 on second reader to a date certain, not to extend 90 days? Alderman Lippman?
So move, Mr. Mayor, and I propose a, uh, date at a council session four week, um, sorry, um, four weeks out, yes. So I guess that puts us at, uh... March 14th?
On March the 14th. Alderman Budge?
Does that conflict with the budget?
Yeah, March 14th is the state of the city address and the budget presentation by the, um, mayor. I don't think we'll be getting much else done during that council meeting.
I'd like to amend my motion to move it to April 11th?
April 11th. Is there a second? Any discussion? Alderman Pan?
Are we, uh, close enough to resolution that that's a realistic date?
I would ask one of the sponsors to address that.
I think we'll get, we'll ask for that legislation in addition to the next two pieces of legislation to come up sooner than that. At the same time, where new legislation for the FCA is introduced, I expect that this legislation and the other FCA to be withdrawn. The middle piece of legislation, which is the fines and fees, might survive all of this. It might need to be tweaked to apply to the new legislation, which I expect to be reintroduced.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Resolution R-38-14 on Second Reader, Forest Conservation Act Fees and Fines.
Again, is there a motion to postpone R-38-14 on Second Reader to April the 11th?
Mr. Mayor, I propose that we propose postpone consideration of this matter until April 11th.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Ordinance O-27-15 on Second Reader, City of Annapolis Forest Conservation Act.
Is there a motion to postpone O-27-15 on Second Reader until April the 11th? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Ordinance O-49-15 on Second Reader, The Conveyance of the Right-of-Way Containing Cobblestone Court.
Is there a motion to approve O-49-15 on Second Reader? Or, or, or is it to withdraw?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I was looking at it. Is it 49-15?
Correct.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I withdraw this ordinance. I move to withdraw this ordinance.
Okay.
And if I could just explain, the HOA that asked me to do this changed, changed the, uh, the people on the HOA board changed, and the new board no longer wishes to pursue this, so... I was pursuing their interest in proposing it. I'm pursuing their interest in withdrawing it.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Resolution R-17-15 on Second Reader, Personnel Rules and Regulations.
Is there a motion to postpone R-17-15 on Second Reader to a date certain, not to exceed 90 days? Would anybody like to throw out a date certain?
Sometime in 17...
Past 90 days. Maybe April the 11th? To the second meeting in April. Is there... All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is legislative actions on Second Reader beginning with Resolution R-25-15, waiving certain residential parking fees.
Is there a motion to adopt R-25-15 on Second Reader?
Some move.
Is there a second? Is there a motion to amend R-25-15 on Second Reader?
Mr. Mayor, before we get into that, uh, at, at our last council meeting on this topic, uh, we had considered this and considered amendments, um, and in fact, had adopted certain amendments. Subsequently, we have received a communication from the city attorney expressing certain concerns about this legislation. And I'm wondering if the city, I could call on the city attorney to explain them to our colleagues and to the public. Certainly. Thank you, Alderman Budge. The concern that has arisen is that one, uh... subjects themselves to equal protection arguments under the United States Constitution and under the, the Maryland State Constitution when they treat a class of people differently with regard to, uh, various rights and privileges. And in this particular case, when we discussed it originally, there are what they call suspect classes that, um... one may treat people differently, uh, under what they call the strict scrutiny standard. So the research we did in the law office pertained to whether or not this particular legislation would attach to a particular group singularly that was a suspect class. And the, uh, principal rationale behind the legislation, as I understand it, was economic. That because people did not have the economic means and were living, uh, with, uh... within economic constraints and poverty, that they should be afforded this privilege and benefit. And, uh, try as I might, uh, the United States Supreme Court is very clear that economic status, yeah, has never been accepted as a suspect class and is not. And in looking at the other classes and the court's decisions over the last several years, the provisions we've discussed don't fit any of the suspect classes. So, on that basis, I think it would be subject to a challenge under the equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment.
With that being said? Alderman Finlayson?
Um, Mr. Leahy, um, so your suspicion is that someone from our community might challenge your decision. Is that what I just understood you said?
Would potentially challenge, uh, a differentiation of fees based on, uh, one's economic status? So if you had a fee for one group of people and not for another based on their economic status, I think that is challengeable, yes.
Do, because this same philosophy, uh, can be attributed to another piece of legislation. Do you think an AG's opinion might eliminate the, uh, possibility of a, a challenge?
Well, I, I, I can't speak for the AG. I, I think this is relatively settled law, but if you'd like me to seek one, I'd be happy to.
Well, I think if it's an opportunity to, um, codify what we would like to do and eliminate the potential for a challenge, I think...
Well, I don't think the AG has the authority to countermand the Supreme Court. Um, so...
I'm not suggesting that.
Okay, then I've misunderstood. What are you suggesting, please?
That your, your statement was that there may be a potential challenge if we move forward with this legislation. Did I not?
Yes, I, I think, I think this legislation would violate the Fourteenth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, yes.
Okay. I guess my question had to do with your recommendation to not move forward with the legislation.
Well, what, what I suggested was that we ought not move forward with it as it is currently written. And if, uh, under the codified sections of the city code with regard to community grants and similar provisions that can be attached to a particular geographic community or a particular organization, the council chose to establish a fund or a grant for this, you could certainly pursue it that way because you do have the authority to appropriate money to specific purposes. However, if you are waiving fees for one group that is not a suspect class and not waiving it for all non-suspect classes, you, um, you run into a difficulty there.
Okay, thank you.
So, what is, if this is a national constitutionality, what is, what are offered? Should we draw it or vote it down? What, what can we do if this piece of...
If, if it is your intent merely to waive fees based on poverty, I would say to vote it down. If it is your intent to utilize your powers under the city code to create some kind of a funding mechanism to differentiate fees, uh, I think that is within your authority so long as the council appropriates funds. It would obviously require, uh, that the bill be written significantly differently.
Alderman Budge?
Yes, I think given, uh, where we are legislatively and procedurally, um, the appropriate thing for us to do is to get this particular resolution off the table and go, come up with new legislation to accomplish our goals that meets the legal standards, uh, that we all strive to live up to. Uh, procedurally, since we have a motion on the floor to consider this on Second Reader, I think the only thing we can do is vote on that and shoot it. So, that being said, I would call the question.
The question's been called. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll? Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pan Lee.
No means we're shooting it down, correct? No.
Alderman Arnett.
No.
Alderman Budge?
No.
Alderman Hayon?
No.
Alderman Kendall Charles?
No.
Alderman Lason?
No.
Alderman Letman?
No.
Alderman Kirby?
No.
Alderman Siper?
No.
Thank you.
Motion's been defeated. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Legislative Actions on Second Reader, beginning with Resolution R-25-15. I just did that. Excuse me. The next item on the agenda, Mr. Mayor, is Ordinance O-53-15, "City Council Consent Calendar."
Is there a motion to adopt O-53-15 on second reader?
So move.
Is there a motion to amend O-53-15 on second reader?
So move.
Second? All right. And I will let the sponsors speak to the amendments on O-53-15.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor and council. Um, we have a number of amendments that have been recommended by staff and by the, um, Rules and City Government Committee in a discussion, uh, to tighten this up and make it, uh, a little more clearer on how it works. Uh, the first item, a staff amendment on page two, line twenty-two, "Strike and consent calendar," uh, because of the way we're organizing this, the, um, consent calendar is not properly part of that particular phrase. We're only, we only at the beginning of the meeting approved the consent calendar. Uh, the general gist of these amendments is to take the, as, as written, uh, the consent calendar would be the first, um, action following approval of the agenda. Uh, the staff recommendation and the, uh, Rules Committee's recommendation is to amend this, to move the consent calendar to follow public comments, uh, so that it's, we, it comes after, um, any possible comments from the public, uh, so that we don't have to run through polling everybody in the room to see if they want input, they just do it. Um, so, the, and the, the rest of the amendments speak to that process. The, um, the... Sorry, let me get the amendments back here a second. The second staff amendment, um, strikes existing language in the process and says, "Upon receipt of the draft agenda, members of the city council should notify the city clerk of any items they wish to have removed from the consent calendar prior to publication of the final agenda." Uh, as you know, between the time of writing this and, um, the present time, uh, we've changed the process and the timeline for council, putting council agendas together. We now have a process, it's about a week and a half long. Uh, council members receive draft agendas a week in advan- oh, better than a week in advance. Um, this recognizes that process and allows, uh, the, the draft agenda will have a draft consent calendar in it. Um, council members can then contact the city clerk and say, "Nope, I want to take that item off the consent agenda." It's a, no, um, all you have to do is stick up your hand, you don't have to give a reason or anything like that to get it pulled from the consent calendar. And then when the final agenda is published the Wednesday before the council meeting, uh, it should be in pretty good shape. The... Third amendment reorders the normal, uh, items on the agenda to match both what we are doing and the positioning of the consent calendar within that order of business. And the final, uh, amendment, uh, introduced by myself is strictly a grammatical, uh, and technical change. Taking agenda and consent calendar and just getting the agenda in. It's the complement to the First Amendment that we did here. So, with my colleague's con- concurrence, I propose all of these amendments in one schwaq. That's a technical term.
Any discussion? Alderman Arnett?
I would, I would just say that this was, uh, something that was supposed to make things simple, but boy, getting it right was very complicated. I think we do, if these amendments have a, have a...
Right, uh, and I would certainly support them.
All in favor of the amendments? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt O-53-15 as amended on second reader?
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt O-53-15 on third reader?
So move.
Second? Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Pan Lee.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Budge.
Aye.
Alderman Hayon.
Aye.
Alderman Kendall Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Lason.
Aye.
Alderman Letman.
Aye.
Alderman Kirby.
Aye.
Alderman Siper.
Aye.
The ayes have it. It is eight thirty-eight, we're going to take a quick five-minute break and meet back here to continue the agenda.
But it, they must have been pretty evenly matched. Nobody could score and nobody... But she didn't, they didn't run away with it. Yeah. March twenty-first. Isn't it the best meeting of twenty-third? February, March, meet, meet, they start a thing, right? Thirty-one, thirty, that's pretty good. I mean, most annoying, but that means, most teams were playing well. Stop going with your own stuff. This is going to play any of these games? Oh, you would have, so they already played in their playoff. So when... Oh. Maybe it's not going to snow, it's not doing anything now, isn't it? That was on our emergency thing, too, wasn't it? Of course, I plan to fly out on Thursday morning. Hopefully, this will be gone. I'll be, I will, we didn't do math because we gave him a few minutes. We gave him a few minutes, we gave him a lot of days in there. He left too many. We gave you days in March, because when he go on that agenda, you might be just trying to find a day for that. And then they just didn't make it until you... You know what? Absolutely, if you have to, you know, if you're friends, if you're people, just say, "Hey, just go on." Whatever you like. I don't know where I could go. But here's the rules. Our plea. But they only see you. They only see you, but... My turn to be it. But you got your, uh... See what you have to do. Yeah, that's how we have to do it. Mr. Miller.
The city council is now back in session. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on our agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Legislative Actions on First Reader, beginning with Ordinance O-11-16, "Transportation Network Services."
Is there a motion to adopt O-11-16 on first reader? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. I refer O-11-16 on first reader to the Economic Matters Committee, the Finance Committee, the Transportation Committee, and the Transportation Board. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Resolution R-03-16, "Amended Agreement, Street Right-of-Way in the Thomas Woods Plan Development."
Is there a motion to adopt R-03-16 on first reader?
Second.
Ever, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to allow passage of the resolution, R-03-16, at the meeting of its introduction?
So, I move that we move to second reader, please.
I think, uh, as, as one of the sponsors with Alderman Kirby, I understand, um, in some conversation with some of our colleagues, that there was an interest in seeing this go to, uh, that, yeah, through the committee process and not having it brought up, so I think, um, I'm, I'm happy to, to do that. Hopefully, we can get it, back to it quickly, so... I mean, I'm not, I'm not, uh, necessarily pushing for it to, to go this evening, the third reading.
Alderman Lason?
Um, yes, we did have a discussion about this legislation at lunch, and there seems to be a lot of questions about why, uh, there's a need. So I would like to, for us to hear the reason that we're being asked to move into second reader tonight. With no objections. And I think that's...
Why don't we have a, Mr.?
Yeah. There was a motion?
That, before you go, that is a good point, we are in the middle of a vote. So it's been moved in seconded, and then we can have discussion afterwards. It still has to go to second and third reader.
I'm sorry, was there a second to suspend the rules? I, I didn't think so, I made the motion. But there is no second, it seems? Okay.
All in favor, and again, we'll have time to discuss this in second and third reader. All in favor of suspending the rules?
You want to hear the reasons for the suspension before you go down?
Right, correct, correct.
Discussion on the...
Correct.
Mr. Saki Nidis, if you wanted to address the council on it?
Yes. My name is, we just started getting the managing member of PTN, which is the Thomas Woods Development. We really trying to expedite the project. We really not trying to avoid anything or pretend that something different than what it is. We recorded the plot, and in the plot, we specifically mentioned that Thomas Trail, the road that, that development has, owned and maintained by the Homeowners Association. Couldn't be clearer than that. When we came to the agreement with the city for the private right-of-way, we signed it and sent it in, we just noticed that we should have had it on the record plot and, in item number four B, the subdivision plot said include, and it is a whole paragraph, "At no time from the, this day, shall the owners of individual housing units request the city to take over the roadway." This is a duplication, because the agreement that we sign, if we approve tonight, the agreement that we sign with the city for the road right-of-way will do the same, uh, effect. Uh, and anybody that buys a lot will have to have a title cert, and the title in it, it will have the fact that they cannot ask the city to take over the road. So, it's a duplication that we missed, but it's not a, that, a dead end. And for the purpose of expediting the project, I'm requesting that if we can, uh, suspend it, we can, we can go ahead and sign the agreement with a small modification.
Thank you. Any questions? Alderman Budge?
Are you working under a deadline for this, uh, agreement change?
It has been a long process, Alderman, and we trying to expedite it as much as we can. Of course, we have the people that they are partners, and they are putting some pressure.
And, uh, how, if you were to have, if we were to require you to, uh, re-record the plot, what, how long would that process take?
Okay, let me explain to you what I did. As soon as I found out of the situation, I called the records and asked them if I can take the plot and add the note in there and give it back to them. And they said, "No." And they said, "No, you've got to erase all the signatures, get the surveyor to sign it again, and re-record." And to that end, we thought this process will be much faster, and it's not going to hurt the project or the interest of the city. To that end, I'm requesting if you can help us out to expedite it, it will be great. The other option is for us to get the surveyor who said, "I'll have to re-sign the plot and do this, erase all the signatures," and we do it, which will cost us money and time. That's my request.
Alderman Littman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question's for the city attorney. I'm not terribly excited about the underlying resolution, let alone leaving the rules for it, but I'm also not interested in delaying this project. Is there an option that we can allow him to proceed and still fix the plat as it's supposed to be, include all the language it was supposed to at a later date?
Um, excuse me. Alderman, off the top of my head, as much as I sympathize with this, the difficulty is that, as he said, the provisions were supposed to be incorporated into the plat. And any agreement you make would require that everything be held in abeyance until the plat was completed. Now, if he knows it's going to be done and the approval is in force, he's jumping through the same hoops. So as a legal matter, I suspect, and I'm reticent to give you a formal legal opinion without researching it a bit further, that as he stated, if there is an agreement with the city that is recorded, that specifies that this should have been incorporated into the plat, that, and that that agreement has to be noticed to all buyers and sellers of property there. That might suffice, but I'm reticent to give you that opinion off the top of my head.
Thank you. That just addresses the underlying concern that we, the point of this, the initial wording was to make sure all future buyers were going to have adequate notice, so we don't end up with legislation that we've seen lately. This resolution, if passed, would make that transparency reduce somewhat. So like I said, I'm not too excited about the legislation itself, let alone expediting it, but I am, you know, I am sympathetic to the concern, so I don't have a great answer other than to vote no tonight.
Final input on that subject, one thing. The agreement that we have with the city, the right-of-way agreement, will have everything that the city wants. It's just not going to be in the plat, it's going to be in the right-of-way agreement with the city. And anybody that buys any lots in there will have a title report, and in the title report, it will be there, besides the fact that the plat has a note already that states the roads are private and they are maintained by homeowners association.
Alderman Arnett?
So I agree with Alderman Littman, I'm not interested in getting in the way of progress, but I'm still not fully able to wrap my mind around exactly what's going on. I think what I understand is that we had an agreement that the homeowners couldn't come back later on and petition to make these private streets public. Is that correct?
Yes, it is, and it is in the agreement.
Right. But I can't find where we're correcting that in anything, I don't see any bold lettering that shows me where that correction is getting stuck into the right-of-way amendment.
If I may, there's no privity between the buyers and the city, and so in this case, although there will be provisions within that agreement between the city and the developer that no buyer will have that right, no buyer has signed off yet, so they take it as a condition precedent, which would have to be incorporated into their purchase contracts.
Can you direct me anywhere in the materials that we have, other than two letters from Alan Hyatt, where we're making a fix? I just don't know where we're making a fix to anything that we're voting.
If I can show you, I can, I would like to bring it and show it to you, would you like to do?
Yes. Alderman Pfeifer?
It's 4B.
4B?
I'd just suggest that, as one of the sponsors, along with Alderman Kirby, I don't, he may have a different thought, but with our process to successfully suspend the rules tonight, it would have to be unanimous vote, we've had a number of colleagues express that they wouldn't be supporting that. So in some ways, this is the beginnings of the argument that we should have in the committee process when we get into this, and I think there's no scenario where it's going to get passed on third reader tonight, but, so, it's just my sort of two cents of where we are, but Alderman Littman was the maker of the motion, so she can go from there.
I guess my question is, whose responsibility is it to address this on the plat? We had considerable discussion in committees about this and another piece of legislation, and we were very committed to making sure that the language spoke to these streets, never being able to be turned over to the city, to become public streets. It appears to me that staff has allowed the very thing to happen that we did not want to happen, meaning that the plat was created without the proper documentation, which means that they could not live up to what we had expected of this. We could not, they could not hold anyone else accountable for these roads or not being able, we couldn't count on someone coming back five years from now, or 10 years, wanting to buy this property, look at the plat, plat doesn't say what it's supposed to say. They haven't lived up to the expectation of this council, which was that the plat needed to say. So my miss, my question is, who is responsible for doing this? Should not our staff have known that the plat should have been labeled this way because of our own legislation?
According to Mr. Hyatt's letter, it was his client's error.
It said what?
According to Mr. Hyatt's letter, it was his client's error.
Well, I understand that, I understand his responsibility, but we pass laws, and then those laws aren't implemented?
I don't think it was the staff to implement them. I think it was the other side.
Okay.
Alderman Pan?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd call the question at this point, I don't think we've beaten this dead horse, either we're going to do it or we, quite enough, and we either do it tonight or we don't.
The question's been called, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, call the question. The question's been called on suspending the rules on first reader. All in favor of suspending the rules on first reader, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes? No.
Nay.
All in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, all against, please say no.
No.
I believe the ayes have it.
That's unanimous.
Right. So that fails. All right. Okay. I will refer this to the Economic Matters Committee, Environmental Matters Committee, and the Rules and City Government Committee. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present?
When it comes back to committee, could we please make clear what it is that we're changing? I can't, I still can't figure it out, I see two subsection Bs, no A, something is italicized, but I really can't figure out, and that's the only reason I voted no, I don't want to get in the way of expediting, but it's not clear to me what is actually happening here. So that's why I'm loathe to move forward with this.
All right, we will make sure it's cleared up in the future. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Resolution R-04-16, public approval.
Is there a motion to adopt R-04-16 on first reader?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. I refer O-17-16 to Economic Matters Committee, oh, sorry, I jumped ahead. Doesn't have any referrals. All right, perfect. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is for the good of the order, beginning with the referral of ordinance O-7-16.
O-7?
16. Oh, yes. I refer O-7-16 to the Economic Matters Committee, and I withdraw the referral of O-7-16 to the Environmental Matters Committee. Which is, what is O-7-16? I want the city clerk to address that.
What legislation was it?
It's HPC.
Happy to not have it come to you.
So that should have been...
No, I'm good. Mr. Mayor, I do have something to raise for the good of the order.
Yes, sir.
Ordinance 36-15, which is the adequate public facilities ordinance, I believe it was, should have been on today's agenda because of the 90-day rule for postponement, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone O-36-15 to March 21st.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. There being nothing else? I would, go ahead. Alderman Arnett?
I would like to bring to the attention of my colleagues the fact that we unfortunately had the end of what I consider to be a very successful season for the girls at Key School, very well coached by our colleague Alderman Kirby, and I had the privilege of going to some of the games and watching the progress from the beginning of the season till the last game. What a great coaching job.
Is there anything else for the good of the order?
Five-year contract?
There being nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor?